It's six thirty, Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Is there anyone here for public input? Need just, give me your name and your address, Gary.
All right. This is Gary. I am live in Way Park, Minnesota. I have a couple of concerns that I want to bring to you, the council's attention tonight, is first of all, over by McDonald's, where I live, over by Northern Tools, the trees need to be taken a look at. Some of them are pretty well dead. There's, there's some green stuff, and there's some brown stuff that should be taken a look at over by McDonald's, by Northern Tools side. And my other concern is the sidewalk, are you planning, I noticed that the weeds are starting to come up on the sidewalk, going towards Menards that way, so that was another concern. And also, I noticed about on Third Street South where I live at, that the, there's some little holes that need to be patched up on that, you know what I'm talking about? So that would be my concern. And my other concern is, you know, I'm glad that you opened the amphitheater, but I live at Legacy Apartment, and the noise, I thought it was coming from my court side, you know, I, I'm great if it is here, but can there somehow, can we start the event at six o'clock and end at ten o'clock? Because I had to, to be honest, I had to call my caretaker, and he had to inform me about the amphitheater opening up, and that's over by what, Luther Kia, right? And how far is that from where I live at, you know, Rick?
Twenty-seven feet.
Okay, how come, so?
No, Gary, yes, it's always, it, it noise, Gary, there's no doubt about it. Some of those concerts will start earlier and end earlier. Not all of them, I'm not going to tell you that. Our ordinance says eleven o'clock, so.
So, because I did hear something at eleven-thirty, they were still playing some music, too?
No, not there.
Not there.
No, that's.
But otherwise, I'm glad that the amphitheater is here, so, again, them are only my concerns, and I, and then also, I should make a note, too, on the sidewalk over by the chiropractor, there's some, uh, that leaves that need to, I mean weeds that need to be taken care of. That has been my concern. Thank you for your time, council people.
All right, thanks, Gary. Anyone else for two minutes? Anyone else? Anyone else? All right, review and approve council agenda. The only thing I'd like to do is, do you want to move that whole last item up?
Um, yep, I just, and I just want to make note, because there were two items that were added, um, today, one that we missed, and then the other one that came up as an issue, and that is the 2021 Street Improvement Award, and then the drought warning. And I know that Bill has another obligation yet tonight, um, at the amphitheater that he needs to address, so if we could talk about the drought warning up?
Let's move F before A and move everybody else down. How's that work, Bill? All right? Okay. Somebody want to move to that?
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, passed unanimously. Consent agenda items, item A, approve six, seven, twenty-one city council meeting minutes. Item B, approve six twenty-one, six twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one city council minutes. Item C, approve resolution accepting donations to the city. Item D, approve forty hours of starting vacation balance for new police officer hires. And item E, approve twenty-twenty-one U-choose Joint Powers Agreement renewal.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Regular agenda, Bill, we're going to move you up, drought warnings, and whatever else you have.
Thank you for, Mayor and Council, for moving me up. Uh, so we received a letter from DNR on Friday, stating that the DNR has put all public water supply units in a drought warning status. Uh, in, and I don't know if, I know you didn't probably have a chance to read it yet, and I, I'm not going to really go through everything, but basically what they're saying is that, uh, any population that serves a thousand people or more needs to reduce your, your water supply. And based, and what that means is how they look at it, so every year, I have to report how much water we took out of the ground. So everybody does that. And then they base, they put a surcharge on in the summer because of the irrigation. It's kind of a conservation effort, trying to get people to conserve water. So they take the number, whatever your daily average is in January, then they look at, well, how much water did you pump in June, July, and August, those three months? And whatever that is, there's a completely different rate. It's probably three or four times higher than the price per million gallons for the other months of the year. So their requirement is, is that you need to reduce your consumption from, you can go up to fifty percent of your January usage, daily average. So our daily average in January this year is six-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand gallons a day. So putting that at fifty percent, we could go up to fifty percent higher, puts us at nine-hundred-and-fifty thousand gallons. Currently, in June, we did one point, almost one point four per day, and this year, in June, so far, we're doing a little over one point four. Our max day was in June fifteenth at one point seven million. It's almost double of what they're, what they're telling us that we need to get our number down to. Better way to look at it is, right now, we're doing, we're about two-hundred-and-twenty-five, two-hundred-and-twenty-five percent over our January usage, and they want us to get down to fifty. So, um, with that, uh, we're not the only one. Every public water supply in the state is dealing with this at this very moment, all day today, trying to figure out different ways how we're going to do this. Uh, there is nothing on the books. They never put anything out as far as, okay, if you don't meet it, here's your, here's your fine, or your slap on your hands. Um, my only thing that I can think of what they're going to do is if, if it doesn't hap, if people don't reduce it, um, they'll come back next year and actually probably put even a higher, higher surcharge on because we didn't meet it. So, um, one thing that you have to think about here is, yes, we're in a drought. I get that. Um, but we also have to kind of do what's right for the, for the environment. Um, our wells right now, our, uh, aquifer is dropping. Best guess estimate between me and Dale and the three water operators right now, is if I kept on the same track, we would probably be in real danger probably five to six weeks, even if we don't do anything. We're okay today, pumping what we're doing, but if we don't get any recharge or anything like that, and don't cut our consumption, I, we could be in real problems here in a month and a half. So with that being said, um, I brought forward to the council tonight to act on this, so it actually worked out really good timing, so I could talk to you. I mean, the ordinance says I can just initiate a ban, but I want your input on this. So first thing that I'm going to, I have three motions in front of you tonight. And the first one is, I wrote it as basically a total ban. Just go right to a total ban. And, um.
Ban on watering.
On watering. The only exception would be is, um, we would continue to, or the only exception would be is, I don't have all the information, but back in two thousand and one, a few of you were on council, we did this back then, before we got the new water plant. We allowed new yards. So if you had new sod or new grass just put in, we allowed you to do watering. You had to come into City Hall. Basically, it wasn't a permit. We just gave you a sign that said, put it in your front window. Um, I'm a new yard. So if a police officer or whoever went by and saw them watering, at least just let them be that. They've got that. So, um, if you approve this, they, it would, we would initiate something like that. It's good timing with the water bills. They're going to be going out. Um, we can, we can hammer it through the news media. You probably have already heard it. WJON or St. Cloud Times have already done, St. Cloud, I think Sartell maybe went out already, too. And I'll talk to you about what their, what their plans are. So I'm just starting tonight with you guys as far as a total ban. We can work it down. You can go, you could decide if you wanted to do an odd even, or do some sort of different methodology. Um, St. Cloud is basically, their press release is saying, we encourage you to limit watering once or twice a week. Now, I know that other people were looking to do more of what I was proposing as a total ban, but they're starting there. I don't know what that's going to do, how it's going to work. Sartell just came out with theirs, probably an hour ago. They're going for, they're calling it a temporary ban right now, and it's two days a week. So if you're on the even side of the road, you can water on Monday and Thursday only, from nine PM to three AM. If you're on the odd, it's third, Tuesday and Friday. So they came up with that little bit of a, you're kind of morphing it out of a different scenario. Um, I haven't heard for sure on Sauk Rapids or St. Joe yet, um, or St. Augusta. But I'm looking for some sort of direction tonight that we need to step up and take, and get your input on that. Let me explain the other ones, too, and then you, we can come back, and you can take each one as it is. The second motion that I'm looking for is to stop all city irrigation. Let's set an example. The only thing that I would allow that we keep is just inside the four, or the eight ball fields. Keep the ball fields green, but everything else out there, let it go. And the top of the berm at the amphitheater, because that's still, we're still trying to get that to decent. It's a really small area. It's not a lot of water. And this would not affect any, um, flower beds or flower, or pots, but, so that's the second motion that I had in front of you. And then the third one is, uh, St. Cloud, they haven't put out exactly what they're doing with their aquatics, splash pads. I, I don't know what Sartell, they were talking about it. Um, what St. Cloud's looking at doing is just reducing some of their hours to just, to, to show that's good fourth effort, that we're trying to help and conserve some water. Our, our system's recycled. I know you all know that. You're probably thinking that, well, the why. Well, we still use up to ten thousand gallons a day depending on the weather. If it's really hot, we use a lot of evaporation. Same thing with wind. So even though we got a five thousand gallon tank in the ground, we circulate, we go through that at least twice in a hot day. Excuse me. So I, I was proposing that we just, we take this splash pad from eleven AM to eight PM and move it to noon to six, just reducing it by three hours.
But still, seven days a week?
Seven days a week, right, right. So I think if we did all of those issues, I, I guarantee you, we're going to come back down underneath that number, and we'd be okay. It, it's only to suffice the, the DNR, and they, they hold the permit for us. The other thing is, is that I'm a little nervous about our, if we continue on this usage with our aquifer, if we don't get a recharge. I think DNR stated to somebody, or I think it was in St. Cloud's press release, so it's not quantifiable, but they said it would take at least three to five inches of rain over the next two weeks to even make a dent. And that's a lot of water, and like I said today at our staff meeting, most of that three to five is going to run off anyway, so it's going to take a lot of rain to get us back out of here. So, um, I will open it for discussions, and you can take each motion as is and ask me some questions.
How about people that have their own wells, that do their own?
I don't.
Mike, it's been a while. I think back in the two thousands when we really had to worry about it. I, I want to say there was maybe fifty or sixty, but it's not a lot.
I don't think there's many out there anymore.
No. I will tell you, neighborhood's full of them.
But are they operational?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I will also add, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, um, Margie gave me the irrigation list, and, um, City Way Park and Willow's are the biggest users. And we're, we're the biggest user of irrigation, so just throwing that out there for you guys.
Well, because I don't, my whole neighborhood's full of shallow well, and they get used three, four times a week.
Well, then if somebody knocks on their door, they got to be able to prove it, I guess.
Yeah, just to prove, put them on.
Show them where the pump is, or something.
Oh, yeah. Yep, that's your own, it doesn't take city water, so.
We're, we're talking about, um, the irrigation system like in Willow Pond. We water five nights a week for twelve minutes a night. Um, but that doesn't impact, uh, water for your flowers and the garden and that kind of stuff. I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah. The only other thing would be, instead of a, and I'm just throwing this out, total water ban, Sartell's going to go two days a week. Uh, we got another council meeting in two weeks. Do we want to try something like that instead of the total ban?
No, not me.
Okay, no, I'm just throwing it out because in two weeks, we could look at it again.
We can always, any of these, we can review at another meeting if somebody wants to.
Right, I just seen that what happens in two weeks.
If you wanted to.
I like that two-day-a-week deal. I don't like that at all. I don't like that at all. Either we're the bad watering or we're not.
It's, it's hard to be able to keep track of it if you're doing even odd days, or how there's, I mean.
A nightmare.
Yes. My motions, at the, at the end of them are proposed until, until the DNR removes the drought warning. But you guys could change that if you want to. Me come back in two weeks, if you just want to make it for two weeks, and we bring it back again and talk about it again. I don't care. I mean, it's.
So the total watering ban, the first one you got on there, but doesn't include flowers?
It doesn't.
And stuff in your yard, or trees, or whatever, just a sprinkling of your yards?
Can we change the verbiage to say, instead of the DNR removes, um, future city council, or some can review? Or do we need that in there?
It could be, why don't you put both, why don't you put DNR and/or?
And/or the city council.
Okay, that works.
Okay.
Because then if the, if the warrant, if the DNR thing goes, if we get ten inches of rain tomorrow, and the DNR thing goes away, then you don't need to take any action. But it gives you still the flexibility, if you want to change that down the road, you would have the ability to do that if that wasn't the case.
Okay, water bills are going to go out. This is, when are we going to start this? Because if we started tonight, it, it's not right. And if we started in, when the water bills go out a week, that, we might be way down again. So when do we start it, and how do we get it out?
I would make it effective tomorrow. Let us get the PR out there. We're probably print letters, and they would go with the water bill, but we'll social media news release just like every other city is.
So effective.
Because they're going to all wonder, too.
So effective, so effective Wednesday morning.
Wednesday night, uh, Wednesday morning at midnight.
It really doesn't matter too much about, because you're not going to do, when you get it, the word out, it's going to take a few days before.
Right, we're not going to be pounding on doors and, you know.
Well, let's just say Wednesday, then, because that, anybody tomorrow wouldn't get, wouldn't get this anyways.
Wednesday.
The twenty-first. I'm fine with that, yeah.
Yeah, right.
I'd like to see the hours changed on, uh, splash pad? Splash pad, maybe from one to seven. I'm, I'm fine with that.
You have?
Put a little bit in the evening because that's what a lot of people.
Well, when do most of the people use it? Do you, do you have any idea?
From ten to eight.
Yeah, I know it's going to be, and it's going to be busy.
People get home from work at five, and they're running down there for an hour.
Especially with the weather we're going to have for the next ten days, you know, we're going to be in the nineties every day.
That's why I say, if you, we're going to change the hours.
Right.
Change the amount, but change them.
One to seven?
Even if you went two to, two to eight.
I thi, I think it would make sense to do a watering ban for two weeks. We come back and look at it, at the city council meeting. You can give us a report as where we're, what is, is the result of that, and we can make modifications at that point.
We can. Now we're talking about hours at the splash pad, Bill.
Hours at the splash pad, so.
What hours at the splash pad?
I'm fine with one to seven.
Bill said noon to six. I think one to seven is a good idea, because like you say, people get home from work, and they want to take their kids down there or whatever, so.
It was just a dart of the.
No, no, I, no, I, let's make it one to seven.
So you have three separate motions?
Yep, yep, we do. We haven't made any yet.
No, but I want to make sure that it'd be easier to keep them separate, and then.
All right, first motion.
The first motion.
Somebody want to move to approve the first one?
I'll move to approve a total watering ban in the city of Way Park until the DNR removes the drought warning and/or reviewed by city council.
Effective?
Effective Wednesday morning, twelve AM.
July twenty-first.
July twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one.
Second that.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed four to one. Uh.
Who's second?
I second.
Okay.
Item, number two. Motion number two. We want to move to that one?
Oh, sorry.
I don't have my iPad on, so I'm going off yours.
That one is to, uh, stop all irrigation on city property except for rivers, edge, ball fields, and a small area by the ledge.
So move.
I'll second.
Further discussion.
Okay, now, Bill, talk about new, odd seeding and things.
In, at the amph.
Part of that, or would you?
It says in there, the ledge, Luther.
Talking for new homes or developments?
Oh.
Uh, we'll implement it, Mike, and, yeah. It probably should have been included in the first motion. I apologize. I didn't.
You could put it in this one.
Yeah, you could throw it in this one. That's fine, so.
Now, how would you want to word that, so that, and?
They'd have to come to City Hall and get a permit.
For those with, with new lawns.
With new, new.
New lawns.
New lawns and new building.
New lawns.
I'd really hope somebody went and planted something now.
That's what I'm thinking. I don't think there's going to be.
Nobody's going to plant anything now around the building except if it's already planted, so.
So, city will give a permit to newly seeded or sotted lawns.
Can we put that as an amendment to the motion?
Yeah.
Person who made the motion?
You made it.
You're making the motion, Mike, I think. Did I make it?
You made the motion.
Yes, we can make the motion, amend the motion.
And I think, Ken, did you second it, or did?
Yes.
Is that okay with you?
Yes, it is.
All right, so the motion is to, uh, stop all irrigation on city property except rivers, edge, ball fields, and a small area at the ledge, and to allow people who have planted new seed, uh, new lawns to continue watering.
When they come to City Hall and get a permit?
They get a permit from City Hall, yep.
Yep, all right.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. And the third motion is to, uh, reduce the hours of operation of the splash pad from one PM till seven PM until the DNR removes drought warning, or city.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
I'll second.
Whoever, take your pick. Ken, Vic, Mike.
Nick will die.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. All right.
Thank you, Council.
All right, thanks, Bill. That all you had?
Yep.
Okay. Now, item A, 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 A dash A, no parking of commercial vehicles. Chief?
Uh, there's, there's, uh, two parts to this. Um, I guess the first is that this ordinance revision or fee schedule change was somewhat tabled from our last council meeting to better define, um, a commercial vehicle and what that is. And I might ask, uh, our seat attorney, Paul Storm, to review that. And I, I would like the opportunity just to clarify the procedure, uh, as far as how we're going to do this, so that we're all on the same page, um, when it comes to, uh, enforcement of this. So, uh, Paul, would you mind, uh, reviewing the?
I got a quick question.
Yes.
If this passes tonight, Bill, do you have signage available to get these signs up as soon as possible?
Yeah, I gave Dave what we're going to temporarily do, so. But part of that is that, that we are going to be the first line of grievance. And so I, I, I think it's important that we have a process that's fair, and, and, um, and I'd like to explain that maybe after Paul, as clarifies the commercial vehicle.
All right, Paul?
So, uh, the first time that this issue was put in front of the council, uh, council members might recall that I was remote on that occasion, and a question that came up was, what is the definition for a commercial vehicle? How are we going to make that distinction? And, uh, one of the things that our ordinance does is it ties itself to Minnesota statutes. Minnesota statute one sixty-nine has a series of definitions. That provides one half of our definition. Uh, the portion that wasn't discussed with the council, when I went back and looked at the ordinance, your ordinance actually clarifies that a commercial vehicle would be one that's over a one-ton capacity. So you're looking at larger pickup trucks beyond the three-quarter-ton pickup truck. Once a vehicle is beyond that size, it can fall in the category of a commercial vehicle. From there, it's a question of whether it appears to be used for a commercial purpose. Does it have something on the side of the vehicle that obviously indicates that it's a service vehicle? Or, you know, for example, is it a semi? In which case, it's pretty self-explanatory what it is. So I believe that the ordinance actually has the information in it for the determination of a commercial vehicle. We didn't have a clear answer for the council in the prior consideration, so that's why it was, uh, tabled and why we brought it back. Uh, Chief, was there any other item you wanted me to clarify there?
No, if, if the, um, council is.
I do have a question. You said two things.
Yeah.
You said any vehicle over a one-ton vehicle.
One-ton capacity.
One-ten capacity. Anything over a one-ton capacity vehicle?
Yep.
Is a commercial vehicle. Then you said three-quarter-ton.
No, no, I, I said, so anything that, once we get past a three-quarter-ton truck, you know, once you're beyond that, that's really where you're starting to see the potential of being a commercial vehicle.
But you said anything, you said anything over a one-ton, no, one-ton truck is a normal pickup truck.
Mm-hmm.
Capacity.
Yep.
So you're saying anything over a one-ton is committed, or is considered commercial vehicle, then?
Could be.
No, it has to have a sign on it.
Could not over one-ton, one-ton. As far as, as far as the minimum, there would have to be is a one-ton capacity vehicle. And then I just, as a, as a, as a demonstrator, as an example, I just said, once you're getting past the three-quarter-ton pickup trucks, now you're getting into the category of commercial vehicles.
Commercial vehicles, but if it doesn't have any sign on it, it's not a commercial vehicle.
Or used for commercial purposes.
Right, it's really about commercial purposes, but one of the ways you determine that is, you know, does it have a sign on it that?
I'm just trying to get some clarity in here, because a one-ton pickup is a one-ton pickup. They use a lot of one-ton chassis, yes, for commercial vehicles, but, so as long as it's a normal one-ton pickup, it's all right.
For, on tense and purposes, our, our focus is on semis, larger box trucks, i, if there is a large pickup, uh, that is just there. They could get a ticket, because of what we're talking about, it's a no parking zone.
Yeah.
But it's, it would not be considered a commercial vehicle, uh, and.
Not followed.
All right, what else did you need addressed, Chief?
Well, the other, the other issue, I just wanted to make sure that we're all on the same page, because like I said, when we start issuing, uh, significant fines for the semis and/or maybe tow, that, you know, we, we are going to be hearing, or we're getting some phone calls. And so I guess to start, um, and, and for whatever reason, this, this problem has grown significantly in the last week or so.
Yes.
Um, as far as abuse. Um, now, that being said, um, I would like to give these drivers, um, a warning. Now, if there's a semi or a commercial vehicle that is clearly in violation of state statute, they're blocking a driveway, they're blocking a fire hydrant, they're too close to the corner or intersection, we could tow them, um, and we'd be in good standing. Uh, but for others, um, we would like to develop, we being the, the police department, develop a placard that says that this vehicle is parked in violation of our new ordinance, and should it be here, again, it could be towed, or words to that effect, as a, as a warning.
Are you going to have a timeframe on that, then?
What's that?
Whether, if, if it's here.
Uh, you know, something as subsequent of, of, you know, this vehicle here being a second time could be subject to, um, now, th, this is where it gets a little difficult. Now, we are, some of the streets in question, we've got Prosper, uh, Drive, Progress Road, Park Meadows, and Third Street, uh, north. Some of those are already.
Third Street South.
Third Street South, sorry. They are already, um, signage for no parking on one side of the street, but not the other. So I just want the council to be clear that we are talking about no parking signs on both sides of the road, because if we don't, all we're going to do is move the vehicles from one side to the other.
Yep.
So, but I, I, I think that, and I think the no parking signs is, is adequate to, um, maybe goes without saying, that vehicles could be towed if they are, they're in violation. But again, I, I guess what, what, in, in talking with Bill, is, is having, uh, and we could probably have these up as early as tomorrow, but some kind of designation to say that this, these areas are towway zone. Now, it, it's not realistic for us to spell out in a traffic sign all of the different variables that could come into play, because the reality is, and, and the challenge is going to be for us to say, okay, um, there are six semis parked on a road, let's say, uh, Prosper Drive. You know, and we tow one, we boot another, and give a ticket to a third, you know, so that you're the driver now that comes in, and your tick, your truck was towed. How do we justify that? so that you're the driver now that comes in, and your tic- your truck was towed, how do we justify that? Why was my truck towed and his wasn't, or, or whatever the scenario might be? So, we're, we're looking at trying to develop some kind of a progressive procedure for this. I think once the word gets out that we're pretty serious about this, I think the problem's gonna go away fairly, maybe in the next month or two. But, you know, a, a, a warning, uh, we've got a new fine amount for, for commercial vehicles. We do not yet have the capacity to boot trucks. If this ordinance, if this ordinance passed, um, we will talk to the tow company, and they will get the equipment that we need to be able to throw a boot on, uh, some of these rigs. Because of the challenge we have with knowing who, um, owns these vehicles, a lot of them come out of a lease pool, and it's very difficult for us to know who actually is the driver responsible. Thus, we think the, the, uh, throwing the boot on. So, the vehicles that will be towed, again, unless they're in an obvious violation of state statute, there will need to be some kind of prior, um, offenses for that vehicle, uh, before we're gonna tow. Towing, uh, we can do it, um, it's, but it's very expensive, obviously, for the driver. It's a very expensive fine, uh, city fine now with, with, assuming that ordinances are approved, and, um, it should be something that is earned through some type of a warning and, and maybe prior, prior offenses. So, there's a burden on the Police Department to try to establish that, um, so that we have some defense in the event of an appeal. But, that, so, um, I think that, so we're looking at signage that is, you know, designates these areas as a potential towaway zone. That's not to say that we're gonna tow every vehicle, but it just makes it very clear that, that this is, we're serious, and that this is, um, uh, you know, no longer going to be tolerated or allowed. And, um, I think, I just wanted to make sure, I apologize for the long narration, but I just wanted to, um, be clear with the council as far as, uh, a plan to, to try to implement this, roll this out, uh, in, in some kind of a fair and orderly fashion, so that we can have some defense when it comes to any appeals that come to my office, might come to Shawna's office, or maybe could come to the City Council, that we, we have some documentation as to, uh, the steps that we took, um, in, in enforcing this ordinance, so. I think that's all I had, unless you have any questions.
Yeah, I, I do think we should give them a warning, and if nothing else, on that warning, it should say, you know, well, I guess, this, this is, this is your warning and whatever, and you know if this, if they moved it or not, because you'll put the ticket on their window, and if the, if the ticket's still there, well, they haven't moved it, I guess that's, eventually, they gotta move it. And if the tic- if the cars, if the truck's still there and the ticket's gone, then you know they saw it, so they should have moved it, so. Yeah, we should give them a warning, that's only fair.
I'd probably say that the truck needs to be moved immediately now, from what I understand, there are trucks that have been there, like, uh, over this whole weekend, three or four days.
And that's gonna happen, they're gonna come in on Thursday nights and not go out till Monday morning, so, I mean, that's, that's the break you gotta give them, that, yeah.
I would say if they're parked, if you give them that warning, it should mention something about this vehicle should be removed within 24 hours.
Yeah, but they may not be home. Well, that, you can't do that, Mike, that's.
Sure you can.
Be decent about it, I mean, I, you, you know.
We're trying to educate them.
Yeah.
Well, you're educating.
We're gonna educate them first, I mean, they, they got away with it all this time, they weren't illegal all this time necessarily, uh, so.
And again, you know, unless, like I said, unless there's, there, there, um, the exception would be they're blocking a fire hydrant, they're blocking a, a, a driveway, they're too close to the curb, we can tow under state statute, um, and we will likely do that. There, there was a complaint now, uh, recently of literally trucks parked right up to the corner, which is, creates a safety issue. In my mind, that truck should be pulled out of there.
Right.
For, for pedestrian and/or vehicle safety. Uh, that's crazy, um, so, um, I, I don't, I wouldn't have a problem defending or trying to.
Right.
Defend that decision, but, um, I think for the others, um, it's, it's new, and I think we, we, again, to, to give ourselves some basis for our decisions and, and to be able to deal with any appeals that we need to establish some system of, of fairness.
What, what is the footage from driveways and regular streets? They should be clear of, because I can tell you right now, if you wanna go drive Third Street South, there's trucks parked within 10 feet of each driveway out there.
Well.
There's trucks on the right hand that are.
I'd have to look, I don't, I think it, I don't know, let me look.
And it'd be very hard for people coming out of that little addition to see traffic on either side of the road there, because their view is actually blocked with those trucks.
It, it says, "On, on any curb," now, this is the state statute, okay? Um, "On any curb, crosswalk, or sidewalk, on, along any curb marked with yellow paint, within any intersection, within 10 feet of a fire hydrant, within 20 feet of the entrance to a fire station, within any restricted parking zone designated by the City Council, double parked, blocking a driveway, public or private driveway, within 50 feet of railroad crossings." So, there, um, "Within 20 feet of a crosswalk at an intersection, within 30 feet, upon the approach of any flashing beacon, stop sign, or traffic control," so 30 feet.
That would be pretty much taken care of.
And there's some more, I'll spare you that, but there, those kind of violations, if we see them, I would not have a problem towing that vehicle, uh, because of the hazard that it's creating.
Right.
But, but otherwise, I think, again, not to be redundant, but to have some kind of a, a process of warning, fine, booting the vehicle, ultimately towing if, if things are not taken care of.
Yep. All right, we got four motions that we need to do.
Before we, before we go to it, one item that I'll have to clarify.
Yep.
Uh, with respect to the comments that Chief Bentrude provided, I think everything in there speaks for itself pretty accurately. One thing, though, is that the actual change in the fees, the actual, uh, increase in the fee for a ticket, that's not part of what's in front of you today, that item will be addressed, we'll have that for you at the next meeting, August 2nd. Uh, we were focusing, I was focusing, on making sure that we got the, uh, signs dealt with. And one other thing that's just worth noting is, as the council is aware, and as Chief Bentrude pointed out, some of these are currently no parking zones, they're already designated that way. Uh, one recommendation that I gave, and Chief Bentrude thought would be fine to go forward with, is that we would have a separate resolution for each of these roadways that addresses specifically the commercial vehicles. If in the future, for any reason, there were a change made to the parking conditions on these roads, a decision is made that some portion of it will be allowed for residential parking, for example, this would still be in effect, and then if you wanted to, for whatever reason, open it up to the commercial vehicles, we would come back around and deal with it, but this is a way to say that the commercial vehicles are definitely going to be controlled, regardless of what sort of parking conditions are or are not put on for, for example, residential parking.
Yeah, the first motion says, uh, "Approve or deny the resolution designating Prosper Drive as a no parking zone for commercial vehicles."
Yep.
All right. And we'll do four of those, one for each zone, somebody wanna move to one of those?
I'll move, I'll re- remove, uh, action one, or require action one. Approve or deny the resolution designating Prosper Drive as a no parking zone for commercial vehicles.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously, the second one.
I'll move to approve the resolution designating, Shawna, did you?
Yeah, it is, it's.
Progress Road.
Yep. They're too close together.
I was reading ahead of what I was saying there. Progress Road has no parking zone for commercial vehicles.
I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously, and resolution, or, uh, motion number three.
I'll move to approve the resolution designating Park Meadows Drive as a no parking zone for commercial vehicles.
I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously, and the fourth one.
I'm going. South as a commercial non-parking.
I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously, thank you, thanks, Chief, thanks, Paul. All right, item B, ordinance 56, building number and key boxes. Chief, you want that one?
So, the reason it's come to ballot is I'm looking for some solutions, uh, for issues that we have with our key boxes and town for access for firefighting and, uh, life safety purposes. Our city ordinance, uh, addresses, um, where these key boxes can, or should be installed, and also the authority of the fire chief to, uh, determine what keys are gonna be in these boxes. So, the reason that this got brought to the council initially here is to correct grammar errors, uh, 'cause I like to use this ordinance, um, to put pressure on, uh, business owners, uh, apartment owners, uh, to follow the ordinance. So, the first part of it is, we wanted to, uh, get the grammar corrected, um, so that we have a good document that I can use to, uh, um, show these people that this is, this is our ordinance in town. So, that's why we're asking you to approve these ordinance changes this evening, um, so that can be the start of the process. I'd like to have further discussion on where we go from here, uh, possibly in a council work session. There are some things that, um, uh, we keep running into is maintenance of the key boxes. Most of the time I'll go there and, uh, keys are, are not maintained, we don't have the right keys that we need, to gain access to mechanical rooms, electrical rooms, um, things that we need to get to quick in firefighting operations, as well as for the Police Department, uh, to be able to get into the structure quickly, uh, for, um, exigent circumstances. So, that's where, where I'm headed with this, is, uh, we need, we need to do some work, uh, to get, uh, people up to speed on, on the ordinance, um. It's starting to cause issues for us, for time issues, uh, not only in the event of emergency, but also, um, time spent on scene, uh, waiting for keys, you know, to verify that we got no fire in a, in an apartment, or, um, resetting fire alarms, or whatever issues that we need to deal with, sometimes we're waiting for keys. Now, part of the ordinance, uh, um, allows the city to, you know, petty misdemeanors, misdemeanor charges for not having these key boxes up to date. So, I, part of the discussion, I'd like to find out is, you know, what process would the city use, uh, to enforce this ordinance, so that we can, you know, make some progress here. So, I, I guess I had a request for further discussion in a work session, uh, on details of it, but as for tonight, I'd like you to, uh, approve the changes, so we can move forward from here.
Do you want approval to amend ordinance 26?
56, yep.
56?
Ordinance 56.
Oh, yeah, 56 here, 26 there.
So.
Let's split it, 37 and a half.
Just, just to clarify, that some of the other additional changes with that is, is that, um, it does require, um, that if they don't have the key boxes in the right place, um, that they become, um, they need to submit a letter waiving any claims against the city for any damages to gain access to the, to the facility, so that is included in this ordinance.
That is correct, Shawna, thank you for bringing it up, 'cause that is one of the concerns that I have, is, for instance, we get a fire alarm in an apartment, and we got a detector activated on second floor in the middle of the hallway. In the past, we've been able to get the keys from the apartment owners, they were putting them in the Knox box, they were giving us a master key. We were able to open up the surrounding apartments, make sure that we had a, did not have a fire in there, or a fire that maybe burnt down and is smoldering, or a kitchen fire that happened that kinda went down. So, we'd like to be able to investigate the area around, around there. As of now, we don't have master keys in several apartments, um, so we have no access to get in there, unless we bust the door down, which, part of the reason I want them to understand that we have this waiver, that they need to sign to the city if they're not gonna maintain their keys, or give us access, that we're, we're not held liable for a thousand-dollar door, or whatever it is. Pretty hard to walk away from a building when you're not sure if that's on fire in there or not, so, we'd like to make sure that we do our job, and this is hindering us doing our job.
Thirty years ago, we went through the Knox box too, and, and, and it was a big hassle with these apartment owners, but it's only a good thing for them and for the city, it's, it's a good thing for them, and like you say, you're gonna knock down a thousand, two, three-thousand-dollar door, all they gotta do is put a lot, put a stupid dollar key inside of it, I mean, it's.
This is more for their benefit than it is for us.
Yeah.
I mean, our guys love to knock doors down, don't get me wrong, that's, that's why they joined the fire department.
Right.
You're a go-brainer.
Your ordinance also does provide some more specis- specis- bleh, I can't even talk. Placement and specifications, I can say that word, the other one I can't, I'm not gonna go there. Um, about what they, what needs to be included in those Knox boxes, so that's included in that, um, and then making sure that they have all of their numbers and stuff all listed, um, as far as building numbers, um.
Yeah, we also have the other issues with apartment and business owners, both with not keeping current, uh, contact information. So, we'll go to a place, uh, we got a fire alarm system that's out of service, um, we're trying to, trying and calling and calling, calling, get people that don't answer the phone, we get people that chew you out when you call them, and, you know, we get the whole gamut. What we're trying to do is get someone there to turn the structure over to. Now, I believe it's state statute, we can do a fire watch and charge them for that fire watch. But we prefer not to do that, 'cause most of us would like to get back to work, or get a little sleep so we can go to work the next day. So, we'd rather not go that route, we'd rather be able to get ahold of the business owner, the apartment caretaker, which are sometimes very nonexistent, or again, don't answer their phones, um, to get them there, to turn the building over to them, so that we can leave. So, that's another issue that I'd like to look into addressing.
You just gotta put enough bite in it to get their attention.
What's that?
You have to put enough bite in it to get their attention.
Well, that's kinda what, why I'm starting to look at the ordinance, to look for ways to put some bite into it, where it's your building, um, be responsible for it, we're here to, you know, put out your fire, or police are there to deal with whatever situations there, but we're not the building owner, we're not here to, um, take care of your building for you. We're here to put off fires or solve police issues.
All right, so you're looking for a motion to approve, uh, many ordinance 56.
Don't move.
I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously.
Thank you.
You got it, thanks, Chief.
Look forward to working with you and cleaning the rest of it up, so we can come up with something that's enforceable.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item C, interim use permit, 10-year Granite Quarry, Sandra Fedor and Johnson Materials, 2337 Granite View Road.
Uh, Mayor Miller, uh, council members, anyone in attendance, that, uh, this is a 10-year request. I'll apologize on the front end, my voice is coming back after a tail end of a bug, so, uh, bear with me. At 2337 Granite View Road, uh, we've been quarreting with the applicants, uh, for a couple months when they approached us, uh, regarding this project, these are the same applicants that also, uh, own and operate, or, excuse me, operate the, uh, current quarry operation that was approved in late 2018 for the five-year permit, nearby to the north, dedicated largely to the I-94 reconstruction, also pulling gran- granite out of that property. Uh, total proposed areas for quarrying of this property is 22.1 acres, um, which would yield them about, give or take, 2.6 million cubic yards of granite, uh, over the, the life cycle of 10 years. The quarrying plan is divided into four phases over the lifespan, uh, those are noted on your proposed operation. The quarrying plan is divided into four phases over the lifespan. Uh those are noted on your proposed operation plan that was attached. Basically divvies it up into quadrants. Uh the intent of the applicant would be, i- if approved, would be to begin work later this summer or fall with first phase of approximately five point three acres. I did uh include a copy of the narrative and information uh submitted by the applicants for review and consideration. Pretty similar to the other uh site that they operate with the um with the change that they would have some onsite operations uh for crushing and uh uh at this site, whereas the other site, it's uh taken off, offsite. Uh that would include the uh excavator, front loader, crusher, uh and a wash plant. Uh there is some uh existing tree cover or barrier on the property which would assist in uh noise attenuation a little bit. Uh the hours are daytime, six AM, six PM, uh Monday to Friday, which uh seems reasonable in my opinion. Uh they did note that they oftentimes don't go that full amount, even it can be later in the day, it's more like seven to five uh is more common. We've not received any complaints on noise or uh anything at the other site. Uh proposed circulation plan, denoted in the narrative, has been reviewed by the city engineer and the public works director, and they're comfortable with those routes. Truck traffic expected to be uh about thirty-six trucks daily with dust control at the uh ingress egress points. The end use would be uh to maintain the area as a natural quarry pond at the owner's request. Provide for a scenic addition to the property, either for the existing owner or a potential future in development, maybe put a couple houses out there around the pond uh as time would tell. But uh pretty straightforward, not a lot to be done as far as reclamation. Uh that, that's part of why uh I was comfortable with the proposed uh one hundred thousand dollar bond uh that I'm, I'm recommending versus the, the heavier bond that we required in the past. There's not a lot to be done with this site, and I think that the hundred thousand amount gives enough of a guarantee to ensure that it's done. And that's also on par with similar work that the applicants have done in uh other communities that had a similar bond amount for basically where a pond is left versus having to bring and fill and grade and reclaim. Uh I did, I did send this to uh uh Bill Welbus who has performed uh monitoring tasks for the city associated with other quarries. I, I unfortunately didn't receive response, um but I, I did incorporate the very similar conditions from uh his review of the previous uh quarries, including Martin Marietta and the uh um existing Johnson Materials site, um because they've, they've worked well for the, that project. We've not had any major issues. We did uh have the uh one aspect come up during uh the planning commissioner review prior to that um regarding the future right-of-way uh between the uh this property, Fedor property, and the uh Mick property to the north. The county has advised that uh that property, what they're showing on the plan for future right-of-way associated with the uh anticipated belt line or extension of the county road there is likely to shift. Uh we just don't know, of course, where that exactly would lay right now. So we included a, a comment or a condition that um basically the plans may be subject to future modification as uh determined with the county right-of-way. It's only in their, in their ballpark. The county engineer uh didn't know, didn't have any real concerns with the, with the um, with the project. It just wanted to put that on the radar that it could come up in the future and uh she estimated that the right-of-way that they're showing is anticipated was likely to change, so more of a at-your-risk sort of thing. We also sent it to the APO but didn't receive any response uh from their staff, but um they would likely be in the same vein with the potential belt line. We did have a, a comment received from a planning commission regarding impacts neighboring wells. I did take a look and see that there is some protection at the state level for adjacent existing wells through the DNR permitting process. The, the uh property, the owner also has uh provided some detail on previous borings that were done uh at their expense by an engineering firm. Given some indication that drawing on the existing water supply for the eventual pond is unlikely to excuse me, unlikely to negatively impact the adjacent properties. Given the large parcels in this area, there's a relatively uh small number of parcels located immediately adjacent, limited impact.
Is there any idea of, once he gets into this and crushing or using uh how much water would be used or would that come all right out of the?
Uh I, I think there was some detail. I don't, excuse me, I don't have that um in front of me, but I can, uh if you'd like, perhaps the applicant who's in, who's present can uh respond to that. I did, the planning commission did review the request at their um meeting last week and held the public, the public hearing. We did have a couple questions and comments, um but uh no major issues. The planning commission recommended approval of the request with the conditions as proposed by staff. So I, I do have the conditions as noted. I won't read through them all because of their, their depth, but my recommendation would be for uh approval of the request as, as recommended with those conditions in mind for the ten-year term.
Hey, council, any questions for John or for, I imagine you're Mr. Fedor?
Jeff Johnson.
Oh, Johnson. Okay.
I guess I want to know where the um entryway is going to be.
Oh, we discussed that with the city engineers and we determined that it would be oh right at the start of the curve there on the, the south side of the curve, there, right there. There's an existing entrance there and all the traffic would have to go to the left out of the gate and they could not proceed north on Granite View Road, pass the roundabout.
Yeah, that should be far enough away from that roundabout and for an entrance and get people.
Trucks hauling signs on both sides.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
I guess the concern was like, when you start crushing and the need of water, are you going to take that from your own or put a well in the ground to draw out of the well or?
Well, we may need to put a well in at some point, but um for crushing, we use about three thousand gallons in a twelve-hour day to suppress the dust on the crusher, so we could probably get most of that from the existing quarry that's on the site and then uh, or we can bring it in with a water truck if we necessary.
I just worried about your neighbors here if you start using a lot and drawing it out of the same aquifer or whatever they're in, that they would lose their water, so.
Well, it doesn't require a great amount of water for crushing. Washing takes a fair amount of water, but we have, we would put in ponds and once the ponds are filled, we recycle the water and it just, we have a sediment pond and a clean water pond and it just circulates around from one to the other and the solids drop out and then we would reclaim the solids and make some salable product out of those.
Any other questions?
What level of noise are you, are you expecting at a, when you're doing your crushing operation? What decibel level do you, you're working at?
Well, right at the crusher, we're probably around a hundred decibels, but that is, mitigates fairly quickly the farther you go away. The newer crushers we have are, the hoppers are lined with rubber, so that eliminates a lot of the noise.
What about the dust?
Well, the dust, like I said, we, we spray water on the crusher and the screens when we're crushing, so that keeps the dust to a very limited amount.
Any other questions? If not, I need a motion to approve or deny uh the attached resolution approving interim, interim use permit for a period of ten years with additional conditions, which are the one to twenty-two.
I'll move to approve with all the conditions as listed.
Second?
I'll second it.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Passes four to one.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Item D, sale of city-owned property thirteen thirty-five Heritage Drive.
Mayor Miller, uh council members, um anyone in attendance or uh on the line this evening? I think uh we've had some discussions on this in the past. We were approached by Chris Wolf who owns a property at thirty-nine, thir- excuse me, thirteen forty-nine Heritage Drive regarding um the potential purchase of it, adjacent city parcel at thirteen fifty-five Heritage Drive. This is actually a remnant parcel um that the city was left with basically to allow for the, the pass-through, a little street connection, not even a full street, more of a, kind of a path to get over to Heritage Lane. And we found that there's not a current need for this parcel and uh given that there's a desire by the council to uh gradually dispose of some of these remnant city properties, uh seemed like a good opportunity to um allow this property uh to be purchased. It's not buildable on its own, given the, the street, uh so it would really be of any use to uh an adjacent owner, in this case, really only um the Wolves. Parcel has a nominal assessed value of three hundred dollars. Uh it's not been maintained by the city and has largely functioned as an informal extension of the Wolves property since their purchase. We received a previous go-ahead from the city council at a earlier work session to uh move ahead with preparation of the sale. I'd recommend uh the city execute the sale or allow executing the sale of the property to Christopher and Julie Wolf for a total cost of one thousand nine hundred thirty-eight dollars and fifty-six cents, uh which is just recouping our costs of, for preparation um of the transfer documents and the uh easement that the Wolves have agreed to so we can continue to use and maintain that uh existing street or path. Uh the Wolves have agreed to that. So I'd recommend an adoption of the attached resolution. I would note that there is a uh yellow highlighted um portion in the quitclaim deed that's attached uh that has basically just a placeholder price. That would be replaced with the actual sale price uh approved and the, the proper deed tax. That was just a placeholder that um was prepared prior to the final amount being agreed upon.
Okay, questions? Anybody?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved unanimously. All right, item E, twenty twenty-one street improvement award.
Uh mayor, members of the council, uh we opened bids earlier this month on July seventh for our twenty twenty-one street project. We did receive three bids ranging from two hundred eighty-one thousand up to three hundred fifty-nine thousand. Our low bid was from Minnesota Paving and Materials, formerly Hard Drives, uh in the amount of two hundred eighty-one thousand, two hundred sixty-five dollars and sixty cents, which is, you know, favorably compares to our engineer's estimate of three hundred twenty-six thousand dollars. So uh with that, I'd answer any questions, but ultimately we're recommending to award the contract to uh Minnesota Paving and Materials.
All right, uh council, any questions for John?
What's the names again? I can't remember. Let's see.
Oh, I'm, oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you, Mike. Um it's the kind of four chunks of the project, so it's an overlay of First Street South uh by Culvers, an overlay of Frontage Road by the movie theater. Uh it's the drainage ditch repairs.
On the northeast.
And the fourth piece is they are getting rid of that alley by Sixth Avenue South.
Any other questions?
Move to approve.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You got it. Passed unanimously. Thank you. All right, uh council mayor, approve bills.
Move to pay the bills.
I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. I'd just like to thank everybody that worked on the amp and have, and Bill's not here, but to have department heads tell their staff that.
Terrific.
All right, that's all I got. Anything else? Shawna, you got anything?
I don't think so.
All right.
It's our next meeting.
August second. We are adjourned at seven thirty-four.